Apparently Jason and Melissa aren't here, so Brooks can sit on me by myself.
So if I, okay. So wait a minute. Have you been? Okay. Let's see.
Are this your?
So how's it working?
It's good. Can't complain too much.
I don't plan, but I'm okay. I hate reading these things.
When I read it, I thought, I'm glad I don't have to read that.
That's why Jason took off. He thought I was going to be out. I'll be there.
Good answer.
It would be.
Yeah. Hopefully, please assign them. I guess it's time to start.
Would you call the roll, please?
Daniel McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Hand?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
You guys want to take it? Since you're Boy Scouts?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Item C is I have a presentation proclamation to Sergeant David Dickerson clearing this week, May 13th through the 19th as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma. And I'll read this, and it's rather long. Proclamation of National Police Week by the City of Moore to recognize the National Police Week 2018 and to honor the service and sacrifice of the law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in nearly 17,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas 21,541 names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 360 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 128 officers killed or who died in 2017. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2018. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, the mayor, formally designate May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. That to further remember their contributions, I direct all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the week. This is adopted May 13th. Anyway.
Officer? It's my honor to present this to you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the City Council and the entire city. Thank you very much for all your services. Appreciate it.
So Mayor and City Council, just at your desk there, I left some flyers for you for the programs that were running this year. A couple of highlights are the Chili Cook-Off on Tuesday the 15th. You can see we have our celebrity judges. We have a couple of them in the room today that we couldn't put their name on there for security reasons, but I won't say it was Brooks and Chief, so. Oops. And then the other big thing we're going to do is we're going to ride to the memorial on Friday, the 18th, as part of the memorial service that they will call the law enforcement officers putting on. A big thing about this one, it's the 50th ceremony, and we have at least 54 officers from throughout the state that are going to come. It's going to be a pretty big thing. We've had, I believe, six has been our largest group so far, maybe eight, but 50-plus is going to be a big day, so thank you for your support. If you have any questions, please leave it up.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor, just briefly, I'd also mention, I remember last month was National Public Communicator Week, which was for 911 dispatchers, and we didn't recognize them. And they, I think their slogan or their saying for that week was the unseen heroes. So they're the ones that get the 911 calls and then deal with the police officers and frantic people on the phones, and we definitely appreciate the work that they do as well.
Absolutely. I didn't know we didn't get one yet.
Yeah.
Sorry we missed that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make that up. I have one more proclamation here. And whereas May 19th, 2018, is the Eighth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Parks Trust and held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to visit America's parks. And whereas families and children visiting parks in the community and state will lead to a more active lifestyle, hope for the next generation to discover and appreciate park stewardship and to work to foster future park enthusiasts and to create the next generation of park stewards. And whereas Kids to Parks Day is all for children and families to enjoy and acknowledge the great contribution of nature in the outdoors. Now therefore, I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, on behalf of the City Council and all of the citizens, extend our support to Kids to Parks Day and encourage citizens to make May 19th, 2018, to take the children to, in their li, or excuse me, to take the children in their lives to their neighborhood parks, state or national park. Thank you. All right.
Mayor Jamie Myler is going to pick that up.
Oh, James. I was going to say, who gets this one?
One of our councilmen.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks. Yeah, I'm marking that other one. I think we should go back and do that.
Yeah, or just, you know, I just wanted to recognize that they are so often overlooked and they're so vital to our protection and our community.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out. I hadn't even realized. Okay. Item two is the Consent Docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 16th, 2018. Item B, accept a waterline easement in the northwest quarter of Section 35, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, from Ralph Edward Ward and Susan Ward, for construction of the Southwest 34th Street Bridge Project. Item C, accept a waterline easement in the northwest fourth, or excuse me, quarter of Section 35, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, from Mike Ward, for construction of the Southwest 34th State Bridge Project. Item D, accept a waterline easement in the northeast quarter of Section 34, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, from the Chancellor Family Trust for construction of the Southwest 34th Street Project. Item E, accept a 10-foot utility easement and a 15-foot public utility easement located in Section 26, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Telephone Road, application by Entegris Hospital. Item F, approve an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County, the City of Moore, and the City of Oklahoma City for Project PJ-CL-0055. Project approved on April 2nd, 2018, City Council Meeting regarding the surfacing of Southwest 34th Street from Southwest 30, 164th Street in Oklahoma City, from western to south. And Item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018, in the amount of $3,1953.64.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Sir. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Appreciate that. Would you call for the vote, please?
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider awarding bid number 171806, Construction Services, for Little River Park Drainage Improvements, to Downey Contracting, in the amount of $9,849,243.75 as the lowest and most responsible bidder and approved contract per se.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the city accepted bids for the improvements to Little River Drainage and the park. We received three bids. The lowest and best bidder was from Downey Contracting. This is a significant project. It will make large improvements to the Little River Channel. It will install two-foot bridges that we've had for a long time that will connect a walking trail from the east side of the park to the west side of the park. There'll be approximately a one-and-a-half-mile trail that will be created in the park, as well as down to the Janeway redevelopment that's under construction now. There'll be some fitness stations installed that we received a grant from, the Cardinal Carriers Foundation. There'll be significant aesthetic improvements to the channel. The bridge at 17th Street will be redone and constructed, and there'll be some minor infrastructure work done as well. So this is a large project. This will be funded with the Disaster Recovery Funds, and the city funds will be used for that. And I'd just add that we get calls every week, literally, since really a year or two after the tornado, about when's Little River going to be done? This is the last piece of that, so as soon as this is under construction, we think we'll satisfy a large need in the neighborhood and in that part of town. So with that, staff would recommend approval. Take any questions you might have.
Do we have the HUD money secured?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Do we have a motion?
Do we know when the construction will start after?
It'll probably start within two or three weeks, and then it'll be a 10-to-12-month project.
Make a motion, we approve. Sir. All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? Would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Item number four is consider rezoning application number RZ-970, located in the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue, from R2, two-family dwelling district to R1, single-family dwelling district, and approve ordinance number 87918, application by Taper Homes LLC and Premium Land Development.
Mayor, Council, items number four and five on your agenda are companion items. This proposed rezoning will consist of approximately 1.6 acres. It is adjacent to 11 residential lots located within the Waters Edition Phase 1. The site was rezoned to R2 in 2016 for duplexes, but it has not yet developed. The applicant is proposing to rezone a 10-foot strip of land that includes a utility easement of the R2 lots into the R1 lots in order to increase the size of the R1 lots. In order to do that, a rezoning and a replating of those R1 lots are necessary. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. The property is accessed from northeast 34th Terrace. This is a local residential street. There is no floodplain located on the property. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be urban residential. The application is not anticipated to affect the plan's overall goals, and amendment to the plan is not required. Because this application is seeking to rezone a 10-foot strip of land to join with R1 property in order to create bigger lots for those homeowners, the application is not anticipated to negatively affect the character of the area, and staff does recommend approval of this rezoning application and the companion replat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider the replat of lots number 1 through 11 of Block 2 for the Waters Edition Phase 1 located in the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue, application by Taper Built Homes LLC.
Make a motion, we approve.
Sir. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? Would you call for the vote?
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Item number four is consider rezoning application number RZ-970, located in the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue, from R2, two-family dwelling district to R1, single-family dwelling district, and approve ordinance number 87918, application by Taper Homes LLC and Premium Land Development.
Mayor, Council, items number four and five on your agenda are companion items. This proposed rezoning will consist of approximately 1.6 acres. It is adjacent to 11 residential lots located within the Waters Edition Phase 1. The site was rezoned to R2 in 2016 for duplexes, but it has not yet developed. The applicant is proposing to rezone a 10-foot strip of land that includes a utility easement of the R2 lots into the R1 lots in order to increase the size of the R1 lots. In order to do that, a rezoning and a replating of those R1 lots are necessary. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. The property is accessed from northeast 34th Terrace. This is a local residential street. There is no floodplain located on the property. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be urban residential. The application is not anticipated to affect the plan's overall goals, and amendment to the plan is not required. Because this application is seeking to rezone a 10-foot strip of land to join with R1 property in order to create bigger lots for those homeowners, the application is not anticipated to negatively affect the character of the area, and staff does recommend approval of this rezoning application and the companion replat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider the replat of lots number 1 through 11 of Block 2 for the Waters Edition Phase 1 located in the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue, application by Taper Built Homes LLC.
Make a motion, we approve.
Sir. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six, consider the final plat of Janeway Village located in southwest, excuse me, the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being west of Telephone Road and north of southwest 19th Street, application by the City of Moore, Planning Commission recommended approval 6-0.
Mayor and Council, this site is located north of southwest 17th Street and west of Telephone Road. It is currently vacant. The site was previously developed as a mobile home park. The City of Moore purchased the property after the May 20th, 2013 tornado in order to facilitate the redevelopment of affordable housing. We wanted to base this redevelopment on the new urbanist principles to create a healthy, walkable, well-functioning village center near the southwest 19th Street corridor. To guide this redevelopment of the property, you may remember a conference of master plan, redevelopment plan was developed, and the property was rezoned to R4 as a multifamily residential district as a planned unit development to allow for the apartments with some accessory commercial uses at the corner of 17th and Max Morgan Boulevard. The city is now requesting a final plat of the property. This is to facilitate the sale of the land to the selected developer. Public water and sewer currently serve the site. They are currently in the process of being rerouted to meet the redevelopment needs. Access is from the existing street network. Through the redevelopment process, the connection at Max Morgan and southwest 17th Street will be reestablished, and Janeway Avenue will be reconstructed as detailed in the master redevelopment plan. There is a FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain and floodway running along the east boundary of the property, which will be developed to function as stormwater detention and programmed recreational space and a 10-foot multi-use trail along the creek edge. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be community commercial. Land use is allowed in the community commercial. Land use include mixed-use development with up to 50% residential land use. This application conforms with the plan's focus on the mixed-use developments and quality amenities, as evidenced by the mixed-use with the commercial on the bottom and residential on top, and the live-work environment. The plan does identify Janeway Creek as an opportunity for a priority greenway corridor to connect Little River Park to the southwest 19th Street commercial corridor, and this development will bring that multi-use trail from Little River Park down to 17th Street. The site will utilize existing Janeway Creek and surrounding floodplain as an amenity. This will be developed with a multi-use trail and other amenities. The final plat is in compliance with the goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan, and because the plat is in compliance with the master redevelopment plan and the rezoning 946 as approved in 2016, staff recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Are the HUD funds secure on this?
I believe they are.
I hope they are. It's $17 million.
I would direct that question to Todd.
Are the HUD funds secure on this? Okay.
And we had had a couple of meetings about this and saw some proposed ideas. Has anything been decided, or once it's awarded to a developer and they have to go present something to?
Yes, the developer that we are currently in contract negotiations with is coming up with a more detailed site plan that would include a unit mix of the apartments and what they will look like, and we have yet, not yet seen those, but he is working on them. We expect to see them sometime in May.
We talked about the possibility of some kind of a tower or higher structure over there. Is that still being considered?
Yes, that's also something that's in the negotiation contract.
Okay.
And you might remember that there was a committee that was formed to review all these plans, and they come in, and we are still planning on calling that committee back together. We just haven't seen anything yet.
Okay.
This is processing as a PUD, right?
Yes, sir.
So the city has considerable amount of influence in all of this.
Yes.
I would just like to say thank you very much for your and your staff, for all the work you put in at the committee and all the citizens. I know you got hundreds of citizens input on this project, and it's like, this is going to be so nice when it's finished. And I look forward to seeing it, and I know everybody up here does.
Yeah, thank you.
It's like, compared to the old trailer park that was there, yeah, this is going to be sweet. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second motion. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item number seven is consider approval of 2018-19 Code Enforcement Abatement Contracts with Complete Lawn Maintenance and Joy Landscaping to provide citywide code enforcement abatement services.
Mayor, Council, the city did go out in February of 2018 to solicit applications for code enforcement abatement services, and you may remember that we have moved to a different process where the city does set the price for all the abatement services that are offered, and each individual company who wishes to accept that price will just submit their qualifications that we then review. This year, we received three qualifications from interested contractors. We did go out and visually inspect each company's equipment and their yards, and also called references. After these inspections were made, we do believe that complete lawn maintenance and Joy's landscaping would be our best options to provide code enforcement abatement services for this upcoming fiscal year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve?
All right. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of professional services contract with ADG in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to develop architectural standards and related city code updates for Old Town.
Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item. You probably remember that the Conference of Plan identified Old Town as a priority for the city, and taking that into this new year, we have seen some new buildings and development go up in Old Town that brings us to the belief that we do need some sort of basic standards for Old Town in order to protect the integrity of the area. We have developed a series of meetings with property owners to review changes to things like the zoning, some street design changes, and the building aesthetic standards. We have had one public meeting that was a big success. We had many, many people attend and got great feedback, and our second meeting is actually scheduled for May 17th, just in a couple of weeks, at 6:30, if you are able to make that. The things that ADG will be helping with is to write the actual code that will be inserted into the city code to help create those standards. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are we going to make these people go by their standards once they're set?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to make or force people who own this property to follow those standards once they're set?
Yes, that's the intent, that we would set some base standards, nothing too extravagant, but just set a baseline of the new construction development within Old Town.
Okay.
It's only new construction?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second? Any other further discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval for a contract with Dillon and Associates for auditing services for fiscal year end of June 30th, 2018.
Mayor and Council, item number nine and 10 are related. Agenda item nine is our current contract with Dillon and Associates for auditing services, filing the annual survey of city and town finances with the state auditor, and preparing the sinking fund estimate of needs. The cost for these services is estimated at $47,500. This is a reduction from prior year cost. During our last audit, our auditor recommended that we should take on more of the financial statement and note disclosure preparation, so we have requested Crawford and Associates to prepare our fiscal year 18 financial statements for the audit, thus shifting what cost we were paying Dillon to Crawford and Associates. We also will be taking back some of the special projects that we have assigned to Crawford and Associates and handle those in finance. Therefore, there will be no increased cost to the city. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
These are budgeted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on item number nine?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or further discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Hand?
Yes.
Daniel McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of a contract with Crawford and Associates to provide the finance department with financial services on special projects and to prepare the city's annual financial statements for fiscal year end of June 30th, 2018.
And this item, as we just discussed, is the contract with Crawford for limited special[1728.33]
the city's annual financial statements for fiscal year end of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
And this item, as we just discussed, is the contract with Crawford for limited special projects and for preparing our financial statements for audit.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eleven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the limits of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of nine hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number twelve is consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars, forty cents to CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 five seven three to Monroe Bow Colston and authorized placement on the Admiral on tax roll. Item C is approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement as a result of mediation in the total amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 six one seven and CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 six one four to Jimmy Seacrest and authorized payment on the Admiral on tax roll. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second is consent docket item. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the city council meeting. Item thirteen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak?
Item B is items from the city councilor trustees.
I just wanted to follow up. I had a couple of, actually, I had a couple of texts on the day that it rained quite hard that night, and then the next morning with flooding that, over here in Old Town. And I know we have a master plan, and it's taking, it takes time, but I didn't know if there's anything that we could do in the short term for that northwest Second Street where it floods, right next to the school. When kids are walking, there's no place else to walk except for in the street, and those kids are walking down the street. So I thought I would mention it here to make sure everybody knows. Okay, good. Okay, perfect. Okay.
I thought the get-out is built it that way. So they're playing the mud.
Some kids, probably. It was a little high that day.
No, it was, it was extremely high. Okay.
And then the public meeting, I know that usually Melissa and I are at the public meetings if ever, actually, everybody's been there. I'm not like saying that you haven't. It's fantastic when you get to go and hear exactly how people feel about what they want their city to look like, so if you all could make it, it's fantastic to be there. I'm going to do my very best. My son graduates this month, though, so we'll see if that happens, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Item C is items from the city manager or trust manager.
Mayor and council, a couple of things. Last Monday, the fire department held their Santa Express Golf Tournament to raise money. It was a great day to play golf, had a full field, and raised about seven thousand dollars, so we appreciate everything the fire department does with their Santa Express program. And then last week, we had received some communication from ODOT moving up our, our proposed letting of the contract, and our pre-bid conference was actually last Friday, and so we were there, and there were no issues with that. Afterwards, though, apparently a couple of issues came up with, for lack of a better term, some of the paperwork required with, with ODOT and I believe the federal government regarding the right-of-way purchase and how that factors into the project. And Mike Vahobziden from EST Engineering is here to answer any questions if the mayor and council have any, want some more detail on what happened, but it looks like that the letting will actually occur in June and not in May.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, just briefly, what happened? What's the question about the right-of-way paperwork?
Well, there was, there was, there was a, it was presented, it was presented not, not by us, but it was presented that there would be no right-of-way acquired for this particular project when in fact there was obviously quite a bit of right-of-way acquired, and so I'm not sure what the federal procedures are and what they have to do when that happens, but apparently the, the wrong paperwork was submitted, and so we've just, we've had to work with ODOT to get the right paperwork submitted now.
But then it'll be out for bid in June?
Believe so, yes. Believe, believe the contract will be let in June.
And then, and then they'll start? Once it's awarded, they'll start building?
When it, when it's awarded, I think they have, there's, there's sixty days after that to get the bonding and things like that from the, from the winning bidder, and then in, and during that period, they'll begin to mobilize their equipment, and they'll select a site to do that, so I mean, there'll be some activity, but the, I guess, the, the actual, the real part of the construction will probably start sixty days after the contract is let, give or take.
Okay. And they had moved it up from June back to May first, right?
Yes.
And then they just moved it back to June, so we're, we're still in the same spot we were.
Yeah, just, it's been a long time that people are wondering if this is going to happen, but it's really getting close.
They were moving dirt over there on that one site today.
Yeah.
A guy had a shovel.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know. It's been built up. Maybe a little, little slow. Okay. Next item is fourteen, executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, receive an update and discuss negotiations between the city of Moore and the Internal Order of Police, FOP, lock number one thirty-one, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash two. Item B, receive an update and discuss negotiation between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local twenty forty-seven, as authorized by Oklahoma statutes B three oh seven, excuse me, B dash two. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
Make a motion that we convene to executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we are convening to executive session. Thank you.[1047.82]